Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for joining us. This is the meeting of the General Government Committee. Today is Monday, May 5th. Happy Cinco de Mayo to all of you. The time is now 12:05. I'm calling this meeting to order. Today, we have remotely, we have Councilor Walsh.
Good morning.
Walsh, we have Councilor Maria Paredes. Thank you for joining. Here in the chambers, we have Councilor Amy Morris. Thank you for joining. We also have our beloved Clerk, Gladys Yola, and our intrepid attorney, Steve Bonacanti. Steve, thank you for joining us. So let me give you a little bit of background, what we're going to be discussing today. We'll have a discussion of board commissions. As a way of background, as you guys are aware, we appointed a couple of weeks ago the board of sewer commission. Within that meeting here in the General Government Committee, we realized that two out of three commissioners are correct?
Of the Water and Sewer Commissioners?
Yeah, were out of term. One of them was out of term for about six years, maybe? No, two years, excuse me. And so, once I asked why we were appointing them, because they can serve at the pleasure of the mayor. Until such time, they are either reappointed or replaced. And the answer was that it has to do with the audits for the city and that it affects on bond rating. I also find out, doing some digging afterwards, that approximately 75% to 79% of our boards and commission are out of term. We have approximately 32 boards and commissions. 75% to 79% of those are out of term. I do find that concerning. I do know that the mayor has, and I'm not going to turn it over to Steve in a second, the purview, this is prerogative, of appointing, or want to appoint these commissioners. But having people, according to what I give up, we got people that are out of term for like 10 years, unless that information is mistaken of what I was given. I do find it concerning. One thing that I did ask, honestly, is being accountable, because I'm held accountable if I'm, people should be held accountable, that I asked who's in charge and who's supposed to keep an eye on this? Nobody could tell me. Nobody could really tell me. So, it is my understanding that one of the things, the city talks a lot about the fiscal miracle that we encountered, coming from 2004 till now. We were at the brink of bankruptcy. And one of the things that the city has always brought itself is is the internal processes that were developed. And I see this as one of those processes that need to be developed. So with that being said, I know people probably want to get out of here, but let's turn it over to, first, to the clerk. Madam Clerk? Do you have, can you tell us how, what's the process? What happens with appointments? What does an appointment look like? Just tell us from your perspective, what's going on?
So, boards and commissions are appointed through the mayor's office typically. And I, as the clerk, receive, and it's typically an email communication from the mayor's office, identifying a person who's to be assigned to a board or commission. The appointment letter comes signed by the mayor. And we receive the contact information for the person who's the appointee. If it requires confirmation of the city council, then we reach out to the city council office and have them schedule a government subcommittee meeting with the person then before the government subcommittee and introduces themselves. They may have a resume at some point. They'll bring the letter of appointment. And then, once they meet with the government subcommittee, it then gets put on the city council agenda for a vote of the entire council.
Okay. And so, Madam Clerk, in your understanding, who's supposed to keep an eye as to when the deadline is coming up?
It's, to my understanding, it's the mayor's office. So I did some digging after our conversation and after the Water and Sewer Commission meeting. And there's nothing in the city clerk's office that says the city clerk or any staff within the city clerk's office is supposed to keep a, the only record that we are supposed to keep is a record of who has been appointed and who has been sworn in.
Okay. Very well, so from my understanding, you just keep the records the mayor's supposed to know, or the mayor's office supposed to know when an appointment is coming up? And then they notify you?
To my understanding.
To your understanding. Okay. Does anybody have a question so far? Or what's been discussed? I think Councilor Allen is trying to join us. Councilor Allen, are you on the line, sir?
Muted.
No, you muted him. Steve, you muted, but...
He's on.
All right. Good to see you, Tim. Okay. Very well. And so...
There, there.
Very well. Do you know, Madam Clerk, do we do like a...
No, I don't think anybody...
Appointments?
Everybody else would.
Because I, I'm waiting for the paperwork, but I did look at it.
There's five of us.
Okay. Can you guys mute yourself, please? Oh, thank you. There is a lot of, just two people that are really out of term. Only the paperwork's mistaken, which I'm hoping is. You understand me?
That there's, that the...
There's commissions there that are like six, seven years out of term, or more.
So the commissioners who are on those specific boards and who are serving was considered a holdover term? Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. I wouldn't be surprised, yeah.
So you wouldn't be surprised if you see something years? Okay, all right. Okay, Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, everybody. I just wanted to give a little, a little bit of context procedurally on what the council's authority is and what the mayor's authority is and the appointments. The city, Springfield, has a Plan A form of government. I think most of you understand that, or what it, how it deals to you. What that is, the city council is the legislative branch of government. The mayor is the executive office branch. And based on the charter and based upon the Form A, Plan A form of government, it's usually the council role, either establish a board or commission or procedures, but it's ultimately usually always up to the mayor to make appointments unless it is specifically laid out in the statute. And then those positions that require confirmation, again, laid out inside the statute for the most part, usually it's mostly, the council's role is at the beginning of establishing them. Then the mayor is in charge of making regular appointments. Now, of course, if there's somebody who makes a recommendation to the mayor, that's fully within the council's authority to do that, but it's ultimately up to the mayor. In regards to the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission issue, we had been tracking this for a little while. And, and so when we became aware of two individuals being out of term on the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission, we immediately wanted to confirm whether or not they have authority to continue to serve. So here is the general rule. The general rule is that if the enabling statute is silent, meaning whatever established that board or commission is silent, or unless it's really specifically laid out somewhere, anybody who is serving on a board or commission in the city, their appointment continues, or continues even after their term expires. And so, in the labor law world, we call these evergreen provisions. And so you're familiar with it, I'm sure, on the council, that when we have a contract that expires and we don't have a ratification of a new contract in time, that contract just continues to run, meaning that everybody has the same authority and rights and responsibilities inside the contract, so if it's still evergreen, is the term we use, meaning that it still is alive. And neither side can try to change those rules unanimously. You still have to negotiate. So with boards and commissions, individuals have the authority under that evergreen provision to continue to serve, to continue to cast votes, and that the decisions that are made by the board or commission is of legal effect. And so I know it took a while for us to get to the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission, but we were confident, at least internally, right at the beginning of the process, that the votes were legal. I understand, because I spoke to the attorney for the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission on regular occasions, I want to say probably a half a dozen times, about the concern for the audit and the impact from an auditing perspective. Them being off budget, it's a concern, but it wasn't a direct concern of the city. And it just took a little while for the mayor to determine who he wanted to have on that board or commission. And so then the second big question, and I tried to put it together in a memo that Tom Moore at my office put together, is if you are out, say, a year or two from the time that your term, your appointment expires, what should be the appointment time for the next? If you, if you should be reappointed? And there's a lot of latitude here. Again, unless the statute specifically explains or lays out that subsequent appointments need to be staggered. In the case of the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission, that commission was established to be staggered, meaning that there would be one person for three years, one person for two years, one person for one year, so that there was an appointment that came up every single year. That if you're out of term, what happens? And our response, our legal interpretation is that really the mayor has the authority either to appoint them for the duration of that term, meaning that if they're one year into a three-year term, it could be for two years, or the mayor can appoint those individuals for a full three-year term. It might sound a little odd, but if the statute is silent, some of the case laws interpreted that silence as that you have the authority, even if out of term, to appoint with three-year term or whatever that term is normally that they're appointed to. So I think from the mayor's perspective, the mayor obviously wants every board or commission current, active, and fully staffed. It just takes some time, as you know. So for example, we have the liquor, we have the license commission. And we have a, we have an appointment. Peter Signator decided, resigned from that several months ago, and we're in the process of reappointing. But that takes some time, because that is a neighborhood council appointment. So we're trying to explain the process to the neighborhood councils and have them make recommendations. And again, it's ultimately up to the mayor to make a decision, but the neighborhood councilors, councils all across the city will make recommendations on who will be nominated for the position. So that takes time. We're hoping to get that done in the next 30 to 60 days, more like 60 days.
For Peter's position?
For Peter's position. But that's been, it just, sometimes it takes a while, because Peter's position caught us all by surprise, his announcement that he decided to go off the board. And that was really in January or February when he did that.
It was a loss.
So we've been, we've been living with four members from then till now, and we're trying to get them up to speed. So I can also, I think you can, everybody can understand is that the mayor doesn't want to just fill boards and commissions. He wants to try to get the right fit, the right temperament, the person who cares about the city, the greatest. All of that is the determination, and that sometimes takes a while. But from a legal perspective, even if we're out of term, everything that we've reviewed doesn't mean that, it means that, nevertheless, that there hasn't been illegal actions or decisions made that could be legally challenged.
Thank you, Steve. Any councils have questions so far? No? Okay. Steve? So let me see if I understand you correctly. You're saying that the, which is my understanding walking to this meeting, that when the term expires, that commission continues to have the same powers until such time he's reappointed or replaced, correct?
Yes.
If I understood you correctly, you're saying there's no time limit to replace that commission, correct?
Correct.
Okay. However, was the standard, the good practice standard?
Oh, I think it's, I think most municipalities' goal, municipalities' goals is to try to fill those within six months. You know, obviously, when you know a position's coming to an end, you want to have a quicker turnaround.
Okay.
But if a person abruptly resigns, or leaves for something, something unusual like that, something quick, that just takes, that usually takes a while.
But my concern, Steve, is not the license commissions, particularly with this commission of Peter that unfortunately resigned, but it's what I see here. I know you haven't been able to see this paperwork yet, Steve, which I'm sure you will. Let me, and before I ask you another question. So, the Water and Sewer Commission told us that the importance of doing this and appointing this because it impacts the audit on the bond rating, is that correct?
Me? Well, that's, they shared that with me at several private phone calls.
By the way, I have to say, Steve, I do appreciate you being here. I dated by the mayor's office and they're not here. Just to put that on the record. But they should be here. So Steve, unfortunately, I'm not asking the questions since the mayor's office is not here. Now, Steve? These boards and commissions here, could they affect the bond rating? Can we be in some sort of an audit with the state? If the Water and Sewer Commission could be affected, can on bond rating, or can we get nicked in any way, shape, or form as a city by having, which I'm hoping this paperwork is wrong, out of term?
No. This is my opinion.
Your opinion? It does have financial question?
Well, it's, the way I see it is, I guess the start is Springfield Water and Sewer Commission is a commission off-budget. So Cateri, I'm sure you recall, and you know, well, and you might have recalled as well, right? I mean, where you were at at the time, so that...
As we were coming in under the new system.
Right, that the Water and Sewer Department, the Water and Sewer Department used to be under the city's budget.
That's right.
Right, then it got, then it got moved off.
I remember that. I wish we had more leverage over them right now.
I hear ya. But once they got moved off a budget, they became really their own government entity. And that was their, the enabling legislation that was passed by the legislature that established them. And because the commission, the way they're designed is that that board is really their, their branch that sets their budget and makes all the financial decisions for the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. That is what's jeopardizing them and the audit, their financial audit. Here in the city, whether boards and commissions are fully appointed or not, would not necessarily impact the financial integrity of the city. Might not look good, or you can, you can have those arguments, but the real question becomes the financial integrity of the city. And, and begin back to the charter, as I just started out. It's really the city council and the mayor that have the legislative and executive authority.
Right.
And that, so you're not getting into that layer.
Yeah, Steve, I'm just arguing the mayor's, as I told you several times, the mayor's authority, that goes beyond, that to me is very clear and place to clear. What concerns me is how many people are out of term, concerns me deeply. Now, let me, let me just tell you, and unfortunately, my beloved colleagues on the online, you don't have this, but let me just read off some of the stuff that I found that was provided to me. Boards of Appeals. Ryan Hes expired 2022. George Bruce expired 2017. Walter Gold, 2012. That's 12 years, no, 13 years. That's 13 years. I have Michael, Maggie, and Mary. There's no date here when the expiration term expires. Margaret Lynch, 2019, she's in the Boards of Accessors. The Board of Police Commissioners appears to be updated, glad to see that. And I know that we have Gary Birdy here, Commissioner Gary Birdy, but I know he was just recently replaced. So that's just happened. The one that caught my eye is the Committee for Sustainability Committee. All of them expired 2020. Commission on Disability. Victor Rosari expired 2008. Eugene Brice, 2008. John Riley and Richard, 2009. And I'm just picking some numbers here as I go along. Board of Library Commission. We have somebody who expired 2008. And they're still here, so I'm assuming they're serving. Resident Commission, there's no expiration date at all here, from what I was given. So, I know Council President Phantom is there, and I know that he serves until his term is up. The clerk is there, and she's, that's like an ongoing appointment, but Paul Rodriguez, Alex Sherman, Captain Drew, Genesis Bellis. Retirement Board, 2013, somebody expired. And that's just a summary. So according to my math, like I said, 75% to 79% of the boards are out of term. So basically, based upon what you're telling me, solicitor, these people continue to serve, and I agree with you, and they have authority, but 13 years to find somebody or to reappoint somebody, I haven't...
I do have some comments to make when you have a chance.
Well, I saw you, Councilor Walsh. I find that, honestly, personally, I find it a little concerning. It doesn't take 13 years to either reappoint somebody or replace them. Councilor Walsh?
Yeah, well, I would think, and I'm sure the other counselors agree, that people that are serving on these boards and commissions, unless they're told their term is up and it's time for them to go, they would all assume that they can still stay in that position. And a lot of them, most of them, continue to do good work and want to stay with what they're doing. So I don't, I don't think the council has much of a role in moving it forward, except for, you know, expressing our concern. But I think most people on boards and commissions, they volunteer to do it, and they like doing it, and they want to stay on the commission. And I never hear from anybody who says, please get me off that commission. Most people want to be on one.
Right, right. Not only that, Councilor Walsh, not only do I agree with you, but I have also said in the past that I personally believe that there should be some sort of stipend.
No, you can't, well, I think, if you would, if you wanted to consider that, you would have to consider it for every person that serves on board and commission. We have no idea how many people that are.
Councilor Walsh, if you let me finish.
I don't think it's financially prudent at this point in time.
No, no, that's okay. You can think so, but I think otherwise. And I'm just trying, I'm agreeing with you in which not only do they do good work, but I think that they should be compensated from the extent of the law and that is allowable and what can be done. Now, with that being said...
Well, most of them sign on. When they sign on, they know that they're volunteers.
No, I agree, but change is difficult, but change can happen. And so, like I said, I'm trying to agree with you here, and they're doing good work. Now, my belief is that, as I said before, nobody's questioning this, but it doesn't take 13 years.
Yeah, but Victor, it's not our prerogative. I really, it's not our prerogative. I think that...
It is our prerogative to call out things, because we also always...
We can call them out, but I don't know what Councilor Perez or Councilor Allen thinks, but...
No, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure somebody will have a comment in a second, but responding to what you just said, that we call it out, now enforce on them to do what they're going to do. If you take 13, another 13 years, then that's a pattern. Because then when we get there, as is happening in the commission, we ask who's supposed to be in charge of this, and they looked at me, well, at us, I think, that we were confused. And if I'm going to be voting on something, I want to know what it is. Now, I could say, you know, whatever, I'm going to, you know, say, I'm going to take that answer and just move on and, you know, just don't cause any wave. But this is good governance, the way I look at it. And I'm sure the solicitor agrees with me. So, anybody has a question? Councilor Walsh?
First couple of things, all of them. Cateri's right. We can have a meeting about this, but we have no authority of this. So, you know, and respectfully, your opinion is this is not probably efficient government, but it's the way we operate and the ability to be able to appoint is mayors. Obviously, as when we mentioned Mr. Dessalles, or I mean, the gentleman from the liquor commission expiring, all of these members of these boards can leave anytime they want. If they stay, then that's on them. I mean, if the purpose of the meeting is just to point out shortcomings within the administration or the operation of the administration, then it's ineffective. But other than that, it has no value, other than to point out what we already know, that the mayor has the point, is the appointing authority. He has the authority to reappoint. And it's not like this is any threat to the bond, taxpayers, or deficiency of government, because these positions are all being filled. They're just being filled by people who have been there for many years. Now, many of the names that you mentioned that have been there for a decade or longer are all well-respected individuals in the city. So at any time that they chose that they didn't want to do it any longer, my biggest concern is not the operation of this meeting, but when, it's not the first time I've heard you or somebody in the chamber make the reference of paying people to be on boards. It's just not really smart. And I'm not, I don't want to say it, because I don't want to make an adjective attached to the proposition of it. But we struggle, but too often in the chamber, what I'm hearing people say is that they want to create another expenditure. But on the other side of their mouth, in a different context, they're talking about the fact that we don't have enough money to do something else. You can't keep, you know, you can't, you can't make free parking for veterans and then take money and not expect that the parking authority is not going to be hurt by it. If you start paying people on the boards, then that's money that's kind of come out of the same budget. And so then, when you're talking about the contracts, you're saying that, you know, maybe we should be paying more to recruit police? Or just down one right after the other, we should lower the taxes, but the taxes are the ones that pay the services, that pay the roads, that fixes the pothole. So you can't, whenever you throw something out there that suggests that we create an expenditure, you always get the next question anybody hearing that should ask, well, how are you going to pay for it? Because if you, it sounds good, but for those who are not knowledgeable about the operations of how city government works, if you're going to create an expenditure, no matter how valuable the intent is, it's still going to have to be paid for somewhere. So the appointing of the boards, should they be paid? That's what I'm most concerned with, is the ideal that we keep throwing these things out there where we're going to rob Peter to pay Paul. And that I find kind of disturbing and uncomfortable in terms of, because we're struggling to pay for fire trucks, pay for new work contracts, the city's utilities, just like our home utilities are going up. You know, they, it's, you just, that's what I guess. And then the thing is, is in terms of the appointments, you're challenging, it's almost as if we're challenging the authority of the mayor. And I always said, and as I've advised other people... And I always said, and as I've advised other people, as they were running for mayor, I had talked about, expressed an interest in running for mayor, when you start talking about taking powers away from the, the mayor's office, would you, as mayor, wanna give up those powers voluntarily? Thank you.
Right.
Uh, thank you, Councilor, um, Edwards, uh, very enlightening, I do feel like I did, uh, actually, before I respond, uh, anybody has any question, any thoughts?
No, I'd like to say that Councilor Edwards brings up some good points.
Yeah, yeah, so let me just make it clear, cuz I think, I don't know, maybe you guys have misunderstood what I'm saying. Nobody's questioning the mayor's authority to appoint us. To appoint these people or reappoint them, nobody, at least, this is the third time that I say in this meeting, nobody is, I'm not. Now, do I think it takes thirteen years? No. No, it doesn't take thirty. In my opinion. Nobody, nobody is trying to take powers away from the mayor. Nobody, but it is my duty, as I see it, I see something that is concerning, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring it up. That's what I'm doing, the mayor is fully aware of this. What he does after this is entirely up to him. Entirely up to him. But at least I have fulfilled my duty. And Councilor Edwards, you did make a comment about basically being inefficient, ineffective government, or on something to that effect of not being, I gotta put my glasses on. Yeah, ineffective government, I disagree. I think this is ineffective government, cuz we're here to oversight. Otherwise, why are we here, just to like rubbish some things? You know, oftentimes I hear that we gotta work together, yeah, but work together which way, just one way? Just one way? No, that's being a fool, we gotta work, work both ways, okay? So, again, as I mentioned, it is my opinion, and I don't wanna make the bulk of this, about this, but if you disagree, that's fine. But, you know, I hope, nobody's gonna agree with this conversation all the time. But I asked a question, what, the clerk asks us, what's the process? And the big player is not in the room, the mayor, so the first time he, he does this, well, no, I say he, his office, I don't wanna personalize it. Right?
May I, the city solicitor a question?
Uh, yeah, once I finish, Councilor Walsh, and so.
We'll be known.
If you allow me, Councilor Walsh, thank you. Yeah. So what's the process, we'll still know what's the process, I mean, the clerk explained something to us, but who are, who are the administration, we should just keep an eye on this. Thirty years, I, I, I do find it concerning, but go ahead, Councilor Walsh.
Yeah, well, I, I wanna ask, um, our city solicitor, uh, his opinion, uh, because obviously, uh, legislatively, we have no authority, but do you think it would be helpful if we, if a nicely worded letter or memo went to the mayor just expressing our concern about filling boards and commissions without having it be antagonistic? You write it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I have to say, Councilor, I, I'm not familiar with, uh, how the requests come in to the mayor's office and how the mayor makes those appointments, I'd be honest with you, I'm, I'm not very familiar with any of that, but I would think as something reminding the mayor of the, the importance that the council has on this issue and would like to see it getting addressed and improved.
Right.
Uh, I, I think a letter would be effective in that case.
If it's just an issue of vacancies, then I would be supportive of, of the idea, I'm not opposed to a letter, uh, as suggested by my colleague. And, and if it's an issue of the vacancies being filled, a friendly reminder to the mayor of his responsibility or duty to make sure these boards are filled. I guess what I have a problem with is, is if some of the cases like, I remember this conversation came up with the expertise around the historic commission, there's appointment. Um, we don't necessarily need to move people off, I mean, some of the names that you mentioned are.
No, I wasn't suggesting getting rid of anybody.
No, I'm just saying, well, that's the thing, is, is if there's not, as he goes down the list, he's, and you're talking about how long it's been these people have served, that's something for us to tip the hat to, um, and the fact that they've served that long and not chosen to walk away should suggest that they are good corporate citizens or citizens of Springfield, but if there were issues related to vacancies, then that's, yeah, then that's where we would maybe a friendly reminder to the mayor that these need to be done. But, I mean, you've got people who have served for a decade or more, in some cases, their, their expertise qualifies them to continue, and that's a benefit to the city, uh, they're good stewards of the city and are well-respected, and if they've been in that position for as long as some of the times have suggested, that probably makes them professional, not professional, but very, very knowledgeable about the tasks that, what they're doing, so, um, I mean, I think is, is so, what is, if the meeting is intended to be informational for something that we kinda already know, may not have known the particular details, specifics of each position and title, but at the end of this meeting, what's, what changes and what's different, cuz it's not about vacancies, this, any vacant position like the liquor commission is being addressed. If there was a position on the water department or any other department where the mayor needed to appoint, then that's something we, where we might need to remind him. But these people who are sitting in these positions were appointed by the mayor or by some entity, even if it was before the mayor got there, but they're there because they are good servants, and they're doing their jobs, and anytime that they wanna step away, they can, and anytime that the mayor chooses to replace them, he has that authority to do.
Thank you, uh, the, I see we're joined by Councilor Whitfield, uh, thank you, Councilor Whitfield, for joining us.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, uh, do you have any questions before, uh, Councilor Whitfield?
Um, yes, I came in on the tell-in, but, uh, I have been really, um, you know, concerned about the appointments, and even though the mayor has the authority, there should still be some, like, um, transition, so we can get new ideas and new board members. I'm saying all at once, but I think, um, that we might stay a little bit stagnant because it doesn't change or rotate, new people bring new ideas, and I'm not saying that we don't need some of the, um, you know, the legacy, um, board members to stay as well, because they offer, um, support and training. I also know that there has been a vacant position on the planning board for quite some time, and I talked to Phil Dromy and asked if he would, um, want another person, and his answer was yes. So I don't know if we can speak to that at all.
Uh, I, uh, Councilor Whitfield, uh, just to let you know, I did invite the mayor's office to be here, unfortunately, they're not here. Uh, the only one that was brave enough to come was, uh, Steve, and I'm very grateful, so maybe Steve, is that something you could answer, or?
Um, I'll, I'll raise it, counselor, that there was a, honestly, I didn't know that there was a vacancy at the planning board level, so, um, I'll raise it to the mayor's office about trying to fill that.
Yeah.
And I'm hoping that it could be a fair and equitable, um, process, I know for certain board seats, like the police commission, he does ask for resumes and things like that, but I'm just hoping like, um, more of these, um, boards, the same type of process can be done, because a lot of times it's just like a friend asking for a favor, and that's how some people get put on these, um, boards and commissions. Um, and that, that's from horses' mouths, that, we get that information, like, how'd you get on that? Oh, I talked to my friend and they said that they could get me on it, like, that type of deal. So, um, we're just looking for a more fair, equitable process and some rotation, and I don't know if we could set any, like, time limits, um, on some of these boards, but I think that it, that's something that we can consider also.
Uh, Councilor Whitfield, uh, uh, did you wanna reply to that, solicitor, or do, do you wanna?
Uh, if you're going to do a term limit, you would need to do a charter change to, to make that a thing.
I, I, uh, so, um.
Thank you.
Councilor Whitfield, um, I don't know if you heard, when, at the beginning, um, I did get all the appointments for the boards and commission, man, and I'm very concerned with what I saw. Uh, now, before I say anything, like I said before, the mayor has complete authority of appointing. The mayor choose, chooses when to replace, when to reappoint. We have people here, man, that are out of term for thirteen years. We have somebody whose term expired twenty, in two thousand and eight. We got people whose term expired two thousand and nine, uh, and so these meetings have also, as I said before, is the process and to ensure that they are appointed in a timely fashion, um, cuz I don't think thirteen years, it's timely fashion at all. Um, and so the suggestion was, I believe, that Councilor Walsh made was to write a, a a letter, uh, to the mayor, which I'm not opposed to, I think this is, that's a good idea, uh, to remind him, because, uh, the way I'm looking at it is, Councilor Whitfield, is that we're doing the oversight. And so, um, again, we're not quite, at least I'm not questioning this authority, but, uh, this is an issue, I see it, I raise it, and we need to fix it, um, in my opinion. Anybody else has any comments, questions?
Well, prior to the water, water commission debacle happening, I had asked for the list of board and commissions, and then subsequently, the water commission lands on our agenda. Um, so I'm thinking that that might have been noticed when put in this, um, I guess the list you probably got also, Councilor Dabla, I think I asked for it back in January, and I, I just recently got it after the water and sewer commission came up on the council. And I think it's just something that we need to get every year, so we can see where people are and if their terms are expiring, so we can know. And then I think it's also something that we need to, um, advocate more for, like, making sure we are aware, making sure terms are rotating, I'm not taking away credit from anyone who sits on these boards and commissions, but I also don't think that they need to be there for fifteen and twenty years, thirty years, I, I think we need, we have great young minds in the city of Springfield, and others that would do the boards just as good if they're given the opportunity, but they're not given the opportunity, so we really don't know, but we're losing the opportunity to hear great new ideas. So, I'll leave that right there.
Councilor, thank you, Councilor Whitfield, um, Madame Pla, a quick question for you, uh, some talk, and I, and I like this because I think we're thinking outside of the box here, I, I walked into this meeting with no preconceived notion or preconceived solutions. Uh, and so, so far, we have one idea about the letter, which I think is a very good idea. Uh, uh, as Councilor Whitfield was talking, will it be possible for you, man, to give the, the, uh, the city council a status report on the boards and commission every six months or so?
I could definitely do that, it'd be something, again, I work closely with the mayor's office to ask him for an update, and then present it to the city council.
I'm only using six months as reference of the solicitor used before.
Sure.
Um, and then at least we know who's who and, and whose terms expire, you know, uh, and so, uh, I will, um, I don't know how we do that, it's just like, we need just a request, or how?
I can work with the actual council staff just to have it be something that's set on the calendar.
Every six months, similarly to what we do with the financial status, every so often with the financial reporting, which I think is very helpful. Uh, and I think that was Councilor Allen's doing, is that correct, Councilor Allen? Back, back then, a couple of years back? You muted, Tim. Yeah, you're still muted, but. Sorry, I can't hear you, uh, all right. Okay, any other thoughts, questions, comments, ideas? No, okay. All right, so, Councilor Walsh, would you like to make, uh, a motion to send the letter to the mayor? To you, through the other, uh, in the city?
Can you, I'm sorry, Victor, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you, Tim, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just say, if you were asking about the financial report that Pat Burns would always do, yeah, that's, that's something we asked for at some point, you know, maybe ten years ago, I don't know.
Oh, it's been that long, okay.
It's been, it's been a while, um, maybe it's six or eight years ago, I don't, but it, it was clear that we needed a report to be plugged in somehow into the, the regular financials of the city.
Right.
This, I mean, this doesn't need anything, I don't think of that nature, but, but it might need, uh, you know, like you were just talking about, every six months, check it out or something.
Yeah, yeah.
It's hard to make any policy decisions on it, if we were gonna recommend something different, it's hard to do it without seeing all of them laid out, you know, what are all the boards and commissions? You know, what are the, you know, what are the similarities from one to the next, what are the differences? What are the terms, et cetera, I, I think, there may be a place to make a change, or recommend a change, but for me, it's, you know, like, when that water thing came up, to, you know, a couple of weeks ago, um, you know, I had some, I thought, that was a good idea, maybe they should get paid, and then somebody else said to me, no, that they shouldn't get paid, and, and I'm like, you know, so, we don't, we could use a little uniformity to the thing where, and I think that just starts with listing them all, and listen, listen what the rules are for that one, and who the people are, and then looking at, so we all look at it at the same time.
Right, right, so, um, well, let's, let's, uh, let's do the motion for the letter to the mayor first, um, Councilor Walsh, so, would you like to make the motion, man?
Sure, I, I'll make the motion, but I, I would, I would, uh, like to look at a letter like that before it goes out to make sure that the intent is not antagonistic. Uh, because it's, you know, although it's a losing battle, so make the motion that we, we address this concern through a letter to the mayor from the council.
Yeah, um, I second that motion, um, you're in favor, of course.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
Sorry, Council, so, well, uh, my apologies, uh, Council Walsh, yes, Tim, yes, thank you, we will send a letter to the mayor that is not antagonistic, uh.
Can anybody ask on, could maybe on the motion, Trace, Councilor Whitfield, on the motion?
Councilor Whitfield?
Oh, no, no, it's after the motion.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I just had a question about the one board seat that I know that we are responsible to select for, and that's the auditor. I just don't understand why we never do, it's always the auditor, so I'm just trying to understand how that appointment works, and I don't know if, um, solicitor knows or can answer that, cuz it's usually like the auditor comes before us and we approve like any other one, but from my understanding, that's a city council appointment, so I would like to know which are city council appointments, how does that work, and then, um, to like go from there.
I, I mean, uh, Counselor, I don't know what the answer is on the auditor, um, um, but, well, I guess, what you just referenced, let me do that, let me try to back up and show and determine what appointments are made by the council.
The city clerk?
So, right, so at least that we'd understand what is in play for the city council, and then kinda with the processes, I, I would, I'll have to defer it back to the council for that. But normally, if it's an appointment that's made by you, then that appointment usually is not in perpetuity, it's usually for a period of time, and then it has to come back up before the council.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I've never seen us like, do any type of search for an auditor, do any, like, it just, I, and I'm not opposing, you know, I like Young, I like the work that he does, but I'm just trying to understand, like, if we're the appointing body, how do we do that, um, effectively, and how are we involved in the process? Cuz usually they just come back before us and we vote yea or nay, and, but we're not really doing the appointment part.
My understanding, Councilor Whitfield, is that the only one that we have direct control is the clerk. Uh, I believe a couple of years ago, I had the pleasure of being in the search committee with, uh, my colleague, Councilor Edwards and Councilor Fenton, uh, and, uh, that's the one that we have direct control of. The auditor, the mayor suggests, and we appoint, um.
That's the suggestion, doesn't mean we have to go, go with it, but it seems like we, we do, and no questions are asked, so I just wanna know the process for our appointments.
Right, right, and so, uh, my understanding. Right, and so, uh, my understanding is otherwise, according to, if I'm mistaken, Solicitor, the mayor has complete, uh, um, prerogative on all, all the boards and commissions, uh, with exceptions on, I believe it's one, which is the city council, the president council appoints, and I believe that's the resident commission, if I'm not mistaken. Um, oil and die is pretty much up to the mayor. If the mayor wants to come back and we appoint everybody in this list, that's entirely up to him. Okay, we hear, because that's his power, that's his decision. Uh, but I would like to see these people in term. Um, then, thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Madam Clerk, with regards to that report, it's every six months. When can you produce, first of all, we'd like you to go back, because I'm really hoping that this list is wrong, to be honest with you. Uh, not to reflect on anything on your map.
Sure.
Uh, but can you go back and scrub this? Uh, and really look what's what? And how long can you get back to us with an updated list and give us the first report?
So what I'll do is, I'm going to tap one of the city council staff, go over the list with me. And, um, if you can give me, here, I'm going to do it as a FOIA request. I'll give you ten business days.
Okay, well, that's.
To respond, at least to let you know where we are in the process, because I was looking through this list, and I can tell you right now, some of them that are like this Maggie Rodriguez, just, not to nitpick, her name is listed here, but she's not, it says associate board member, she's not a board member. She's a staff member that's responsible for posting agendas. So that's why there's no date associated with that.
Yeah.
So I want to clarify with all, all of these, with, um, one of the staff, so I'll figure out who's not working on a project and I'll work with them.
Okay, thank you, Solicitor. Let's see, okay, um. So, you got about ten days, you get back to us with a new list, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then we can present this to the chairman and to the council as well?
Sure. Sure, yeah, whatever, then you're next.
Okay.
Regular meeting.
Got you, got you. Okay, that sounds good. All right, any other questions, comments, concerns, thoughts?
No, I got, I have to go to another meeting, so I'll catch up with you later.
Got you. Uh, well, with that being said, the time is now twelve fifty-seven. Thank you for joining me, joining us. Uh, the general government, uh, meeting is at twelve fifty-seven. Thank you. God bless everybody.